Not bad.
Not.
I call to order and welcome you to the October twentieth Board of Education Special Called Meeting. Mr. Taylor, would you do the pledge to the flag?
Absolutely. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As I said, this is a special called meeting, and before we start, I would like to welcome Scotty Gilbert, Howard Thompson, and Denny Collins with the Bradley County Commission. We sincerely appreciate you being here today. Thank you. We only have one item today, and this is in regard to Parkview Playground Equipment, and I'm going to turn it over to Corbett and Kyle. Thank you.
Very quickly walk through and kind of give you an overview of the existing conditions. This is the current playground for the pre-K to second grade side of the school. See the, there's, there's two different structures and then the swing sets. This is the current playground for the third to fifth grade side, swing sets and structure. This is the current playground in front of the school that will remain in place. This one's not being impacted by the expansion. The other two previous are, are going to be removed for the expanded buildings.
Why did you, why did it nowhere near anything else?
That playground was put in, I believe that playground was put in.
A reason.
Parks and Rec. When they put the free space for walking, they played track, that was added with Parks and Rec.
Oh, okay.
Was that PTO as well, or just Parks and Rec?
In that where the.
Geothermal.
Geothermal is.
And we did have to fix some of the geothermal field that was impacted by that.
Okay. Got it. Sorry. The, there are two new structures proposed with the expansion and the relocation and replacement of playgrounds. This structure is, is the taller of the two. This structure is ADA compliant. This structure is rated for ages five through twelve.
That one is?
This one is, yes, sir. The other?
Kindergarten through.
Kindergarten through twelve years old.
Fifth grade, technically six.
The, the second structure is not as tall, and this one is rated not just for five through twelve, but two through five. So this one is rated for ages two through twelve. This one would be, the rating would be compliant for pre-K as well. The issue is that this one got installed on the third, fourth, and fifth grade side, not per our intent. We intended for the taller one to be installed on the third, fourth, and fifth grade side. This one is currently installed there, and the taller one is under construction. It's, it's in assembly on the kindergarten first and second grade side of the building. One of the options we're going to get to in just a moment would propose to add a section which would include pre-K, a pre-K structure. What you're seeing here is what's proposed with the arc swings as well. And then want to walk through the, the three options. Obviously, the, the taller one is, is, the intent, the original intent was to have the taller one on the third, fourth, and fifth grade side, the shorter one on the first, kindergarten first and second grade side. Because of the ratings and the warranty and the liability of these things, the, the only possibility to relocate it while maintaining manufacturer liability, manufacturer's warranty and all of that, is for the manufacturer to disassemble and relocate the structures. It's very labor intensive. They're telling us it's going to take about three weeks for their, for their part of the, of the confusion that led to this. They have discounted their daily rate, and they have proposed for fifty thousand dollars to disassemble and relocate that. It would take three weeks. For, for, for the engineer's portion, his contribution towards the confusion that led to this, they are putting fifteen thousand dollars towards the solution. So the net cost to the district for option one would be a net of thirty-five thousand dollars. Option two would leave the two, well, let me make very clear. Option one would disassemble and relocate the towers to the sides that they were originally intended to. Option two would leave those tower structures where they are, and it would demise a fence. It would demise the pad, the playground pad on the kindergarten first and second grade side of the school, and add a pre-K portion to that. The two issues with the, the, the towers being on opposite ends of the campus are walking distance and proximity for pre-K, because the pre-K wing is on the back left-hand side, and adding this, adding this section, adding a second section for pre-K rated structure and swing, they have, the manufacturer has discounted that, and the manufacture fabrication, delivery, and installation of that equipment would cost twenty-two thousand dollars, less the contribution from the engineer. So it would be a net seven thousand dollars to the district, and from the time we release it, it would be four to six weeks to get through fabrication, delivery, and installed. It would take about four to six weeks.
With that said, if you chose that option, they would continue to move forward with what they already have at school, and they would go ahead and complete the remainder of the work of the tower side, and they're only a week from completing that tower side work. So from the overall construction side of things, you would be able to temporarily fence both playgrounds and then use those within a week while we're waiting on the additional pre-K that would come in later. So you would keep the construction project moving within about a week as far as the overall.
Should we wait to ask you questions or ask you?
Madam Chair.
I, you said walking.
Go ahead.
Is that for, for pre-K, for, is it a big?
The distance, the distance from the back.
If I'm, if I'm in either class, am I going to have to walk a long way?
The distance from the back door of the pre-K side to the new playground is a hundred, approximately a hundred and twenty-five feet. The distance from third to fifth grade playground is approximately a hundred and twenty-five feet. Now, that's to the two playgrounds. If you come to the center of the school, it's two-hundred-and-fifty feet to each playground.
Either direction.
If you come from the third to fifth grade lane and go all the way across, it's approximately four-hundred feet. If you come from K to two and come across, it's approximately four-hundred feet. So that's your distances. It's about a football field just over in distances from each.
How's that compared to other schools?
We have some schools that have a very short distance, as Ms. Kason and I were talking about today, only having one playground in prospect, but it's a really close playground to the back of the school. Hopewell currently, if you take the farthest classrooms that are next to the cafeteria and go all the way across, you're probably at least four-hundred. I have not walked it as of today, but knowing that site as well as I do, you're probably at least four-hundred feet to those playgrounds. So it varies across the district as far as walking distances.
But now the, going back to this, the original plan, what we all set and looked at and voted upon was to have the larger playground on the end of the school for the larger students, for the, for the higher grades, and then the other one for the lower grades, correct?
That was the original.
That was the original plan. I went this weekend and rolled it off with the wheel. If you come from the gang bathroom inside the primary hall to the opposite corner, because that was one of the options, to just have them walk, but from there to there is six-hundred-and-thirty feet average. You get six-hundred if you come out the end, you get about six-ten if you go out the middle, and it's six-forty something if you go out the fifth grade hallway down there. So I just averaged it at about six-hundred-and-thirty feet. So me traveling solo with just a, an adult walk was about three minutes and thirty seconds. That's no kids or anything like that to, to contend with. That's relevant because the state mandates how long that we spend in recess. You know, the new law passed last year, and the walk to or from recess does not count toward that time. So, and teachers teach bell to bell, so it's important that we make good use of this time.
So, so just to clarify, so you said it was six-hundred and something feet?
Average is six-hundred-and-thirty feet.
But you said the.
The gang restaurants is what he took.
That's the center of the hallway in.
From the inside.
From the inside.
Okay, so you're measuring from going out the door.
Back doors.
Okay, okay, that's, so you're.
He came into the gang restaurants and incorporated that amount of space too. I did not do that during school today.
Would, would, if I was at Oak Grove or Michigan Avenue or whatever, would it be by the luck of God where my classroom is in the school, how far I had to walk? Do they walk different distances or the same? Because it is a big deal about elementary kids, about how far you have to walk. No question.
They tell where your classroom is determines the amount of walk.
Could be different.
Well, and.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I know that at Michigan Avenue this year, or it may have been last year, that they switched where grade levels were, and I can't remember, but I believe they switched the fifth grade to the closer end where the playground and the maybe second and third were on the, on the other side. So, you know, when principals, when numbers are fluctuating and stuff, you, you're right, Mr. Bryson, there, the grade levels may flip some. It depends on, you know, what space you need and what's best.
You said a minute ago, we don't have right now a pre-K playground.
Currently, we do not.
Okay.
But you had a two-year-old, two to five.
We currently do have pre-K on this.
Oh, no, but it's going to be torn up.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
No.
No.
The, the, the shorter tower of the two is rated for ages two through twelve.
That's the one that's in the wrong.
So that's on the, it's currently installed on the third, fourth, and fifth grade side of the campus, but that one is rated for ages two through twelve. So that technically is a pre-K.
But you're talking about putting the pre-K playground on, on the side right now is the lower grades.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Is that plan? I don't know.
No.
So, so let me go back to the options.
It was almost coming out those doors there and to the left.
Playground is for the, right now, I didn't say it's for K through two, the one that's not built yet with, with the big tower.
Correct.
It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be the K whatever, but my opinion, if you, are we talking about, is that K two? I heard somebody say about letting the fifth grade go down here or whatever.
The taller tower is rated for ages five through twelve.
Well, they don't care.
It's currently being assembled on the K-one-two side of the campus.
The, the height on these two, just so that, for, for people that may not have been there, so the height on the, the lower playground, the one that's rated two through twelve, the deck height on that is five and a half feet from the mulch. The taller tower, the highest deck height on it, I measured to where the mulch is going to come to, is thirteen feet. There's a substantial difference in the height in the two.
It looks right now, the tall one looks a lot taller. But did you say when you put that cell phone there, it won't?
This is it.
It looked like this, right?
I know what that, but that don't look like to me. That one don't look as big as one out there.
Once, let me just say it like this. I don't know if people have been to the seventeenth, the park at Seventeenth Street City installed. You have a very tall tree. You will have several different components. The only way you can get out of this playground is to go down a slide.
Or back down the stairs.
Walls and stairs. So it's not something, currently, when you go out there and look, all the sides are not put on. So it'd appear that you could fall off the top, and it would be very dangerous. But once everything's put on, you will not be able to.
If a little kid liked the side and could do it, and parents, like actress said, a parent could let their kid use it if they wanted to. Either one of them.
But the, the slide deck height is thirteen feet from where the, it's higher than that now.
That one out there looks, right now looks taller. I'm wondering if it's putting that sign on there, what makes it look not as tall?
Maybe.
But it looks taller out there.
Okay.
Once the slides and stairs are on it, will change the visual perspective.
I have one question, and maybe one statement. Well, this is the statement. The installation era was unfortunate. But the reality is the equipment is fully safe, it's functional, and it's age-appropriate for five through twelve. It's simply on the opposite side of the building. Is that correct or incorrect?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, Madam Chair, I've got a statement that I want to share also, if that's okay with you.
Okay, do you want to do it now or wait till they finish?
Uh, I can do it now. So the original plan for the new Parkview Elementary Campus was clear. Kindergarten first and second grades will be located on what I refer to as the north side of the building. The third, fourth, and fifth grades will be on the south side. This layout was intentionally designed to best serve the developmental and educational needs of our students. The proposed vote is not about changing the design, it's more about correcting a deviation from it. Returning the playground equipment to its originally intended location aligns with what was planned from the beginning and is what is in the best interest of our students and our teachers. I understand that making this correction is projected to cost around fifty thousand dollars based on option one. However, the architect firm, the civil engineering firm involved in the project have agreed to contribute a combined fifteen thousand dollars to the cost, which brings the net cost down to thirty-five thousand. If I'm correct, overall, we're about three-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars under budget or had that built into contingency. So the board wouldn't really need to out, reallocate any funds from any other projects. We've got the money inside this project to make the correction of the mistake. I also want to make note that correcting our mistakes or making changes during the course of our project's not unusual. The board has on several occasions taken action to approve change orders or address oversights in ongoing projects, including Hopewell Highway Project, Pi Center, installation of our learning cartages at Waterville, Bradley Central Front Entrance, Field House, and many others. So addressing issues as they arise is a standard and a responsible part of managing a large-scale construction project. Since this issue came to light, I've received more calls, texts, and meeting requests regarding the playground location than I have on any other issue in my time on the Board of Education. And I believe that speaks volumes about the level of concern and engagement from our community. And while every board member has both a voice and a vote in this manner, I want, in this matter, I want to respectfully remind the board that this project falls within the fourth district, and I was elected to represent the specific needs and preferences for the families and educators in that district. This vote is not a statement against the district or Dr. Cash or its leadership, but rather a vote to do what is right for the children of Parkview Elementary by honoring their original student-centered design. So here in just a moment, I would urge my fellow board members to join me in voting to place the playground equipment in its original intended and most appropriate location.
Okay, Mr. Bryson.
Are we going to, well, I think that, I don't have to do it. What is the principal at, at, are we going to, is that a, a fair?
Yeah, let's let them finish. Is that okay, Dr. Cash?
There is something, Mr. Bryson, that you were talking about, the playgrounds. When I was out there watching the children play, the, I, I, I call them the littles, that, those little, they were probably pre-K and five-year-olds were playing on the smaller piece of equipment, and currently that is not in the, the proposed plan, and I think Ms. Granon will speak to that. They are more likely to be on a smaller piece of equipment, either, rather than either one of these. Now, there are some I know that are going to climb and jump and do everything. I've watched Kyle's children climbing trees that I was holding my breath on, but, but overall, the majority of those kids were playing on even a smaller structure. And I think that smaller structure was purchased by the, Ms. Granon, was it purchased by PTO?
The, the one in the middle was purchased by Family Resource.
Family Resource, mhm.
And then the one on the, the blue with the yellow, the school.
Yeah, that's the one I saw most of them playing on, yeah. On the other hand, I saw, as typical of, of fourth and fifth grade, maybe third were out there too. They were just running and throwing footballs and cla, and just running. It was, you know, typical of what I've seen in the past.
Is there any plan for what they're going to do with that equipment?
I'll let them speak to that because I asked that question as well.
I hope we donate it.
Currently, our maintenance department, we have a person that is specifically rated in our maintenance department that.
Has a playground certification, which is a thing.
Has a playground certification, which you have to have to inspect and check. They have been destructing components of the playground that are reusable. They cannot totally destruct what they can until students are off of them. We're still trying to leave Parkview kids opportunities to play until they have the new area. But we have already taken swings out, and there has been other components of the playgrounds taken that have gone to Taylor, who has received portions of those. Am I correct, Mr. McKenna? And other components are being salvaged that we can reuse and repurpose that don't impact a warranty or create unsafe smoking. So we are trying to keep as much as we can usable and re-putting it into other areas that need those.
So we can use some of them.
We are currently taking some of it and reusing it.
Salvaging what we can.
But the big structures were the ones that you cannot salvage. Is that correct?
Correct. What, what hap, what's, those playgrounds today have very large footers that they're built into and steel. And so those footers, when you go to jackhammer and you go to, and that's what the construction company was talking about with number one, is when you go to these, construct them, you have to be very surgical. And in the process, it's, it's just a process. So as far as, that's how we're repurposing things, Miss Lee, at this point.
Okay, would you guys like to go ahead and, do you have anything else to add?
Just in, okay.
Don't, don't you have one more?
Yes, sir. So in summary, the, we presented option one, which is disassemble and, and relocate the structures to the originally intended locations. Option two, leave the two large structures where they are, and on the K-one-two side, put up a demising fence and order some new equipment that's age-appropriate for age two through five for the pre-K.
Would that mean that big piece will be fenced down from the rest of the playground?
So the large pad there will have the taller structure and a swing bar, and then there'll be a demising fence, and then the pre-K section.
So it'd be a separate pre-K playground from the large.
Pre-K section would contain these.
With the big piece, with the kids that go out there and play on the regular play, not the pre-K, but the, what, would they be able to get to the big thing without going through a fence?
All the playgrounds will be fenced.
They have to have a gate.
All the, all the playgrounds will be fenced and gated. And the, the, the playground, what we were, what option two would propose is to leave the tall tower on the K-one-two side where it's being assembled currently, demising with a, a fence, demising out a second section within that pad and putting a pre-K playground. So there'd be a pre-K that's rated for ages two through five, and there'd be the taller tower, which is ages, rated ages five through twelve.
Okay, have we gotten to option three?
Option three then. Option three is a combination of both of those, and it would disassemble and relocate both of the towers to where they were originally intended, and it would demise and add a pre-K section on the K-one-two side for the, for the littles. So it's a combination of the two.
Madam Chair, I, I, but within the playgrounds, all playgrounds right now do have a gate. They have to have a gate, right? So the kids can get in and out, okay.
Option three, Madam Chair, keeps the pre-K playground separate, but if we move forward with moving the playgrounds and putting them on their correct side, it's not necessary potentially to have a pre-K because that side then becomes rated two through the twelve.
Everything on that side would be rated ages two.
That was going to be my question.
Who's going to pay for the pre-K playground?
That total cost, that would be option two. The total cost of that.
Fair decision.
As.
Have we talked?
It'll be one of these options?
So option two, the pre-K section, adding a pre-K section. The, the, the playground vendor discounted the equipment fifty percent and discounted the, the installation as well. So the total cost for adding the pre-K section is twenty-two thousand dollars. And if, if that's all we do, then the fifteen thousand dollar contribution from the architects and engineers would offset that, and it would be a net cost to the district of seven thousand dollars. And the fabrication, delivery, and installation time would be four to six weeks. Option three would, would relocate both of the towers as per option one, and it would add the pre-K section as per option two. It would do both of those. So the combined cost is seventy-two thousand, less the fifteen thousand dollar contribution from the engineer, and the net cost to the district would be fifty-seven thousand. Timing's the same. The, the, the larger structures would be complete within three weeks, relocated within three weeks, and the pre-K section would be a four to six week delivery and installation.
Okay, anything else? Okay.
I just have a question, or not even a question, I guess a statement. First, why would we come up with three different options when we really just have one issue? And the issue is, it was put in the wrong place, the installation. So I'm not even sure why we would have an option three because that's more cost, and we're trying to alleviate the cost by fixing the problem. So why would option three even be an option?
Just.
Because you're going to have to swap them anyways. You're just adding more to it for pre-K. But you already said technically we wouldn't need, we wouldn't need that because it's already set up for that. So I, I'm just, I'm having a hard time why we would even have options when there's an issue. It doesn't matter who made the issue or how the issue came about, but we know there's an issue. Like, why can't we just vote on fixing it? And we've already know that we're under budget, so just fix it.
Okay, I would like to bring up Ms. Granon. Who's in the audience today is, and the principal of Parkview Elementary?
Hello, good afternoon. I'm Jody Granon, principal of Parkview Elementary School. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. I've had the privilege of leading Parkview for eleven years, and I want to express my gratitude for the board's continued investment in our students. The addition of these new classrooms supports our growth and enhances the learning environment for our children. With any construction project, this was my first one as principal, there are challenges to work through. As plans progressed, the playground location shifted several times due to the site needs and the space availability. Although the primary and intermediate playgrounds now sit in different places than initially planned, we can adjust our procedures and routines by walking to the best-suited play area for each grade level. Student safety remains our top priority. With regard to the equipment, I want to thank you for considering our preschool students. We have four preschool classrooms currently, which is more than any other Bradley County school. We would greatly benefit from equipment especially designed for that age group, and our pre-K equipment would also allow our kindergarten students to utilize that play area as well. Adding the additional pre-K equipment is, is a needed support, and I would greatly appreciate maybe this solution. So looking ahead, we hope to continue the expansion of our outdoor spaces with basketball goal areas, additional swings, and a larger gated area for our older students to run and play football. Again, I thank you for your ongoing support and for all you do to create opportunities for our students.
And here again, Ms. Granon, the if this board chooses an option that includes the pre-K, that is ages two through five, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
So, okay, anything else?
I just want to ask, so based off what you said, I, I just want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly. You said that you would like the option that gave you that additional pre-K equipment?
I think that would help with those four classrooms. I think that would help with those four classrooms.
Okay. Madam Chair. Yes. Ms. Granon, you, some of those pre-K are special needs pre-K, aren't they?
Yes, we have three CDC pre-K classrooms. So, taking them to the opposite side of the building is not an option. Like, we're gonna have to do something on that side, I feel like, in my opinion, you know.
What about moving the others? What about, if you made the fifth grade come over here and that, or, or, not pre-K? Would that work?
I mean, that was the original plan.
The pieces, the kids.
I think you want to clarify that, Mr. Bryson.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Right now, K through two or three, whatever, three, two, five, if you just switch the kids, forget about pre-K, you're gonna build them a playground on this side, period. Would that add a bunch of walking, would that be, other than make me confusing somebody for a while? And can you live with that, or like that, or hate that, or what?
So if I understand you correctly...
That's unusual.
I did walk the building today and have a plan for my fourth and fifth graders. They can go out their classrooms, walk down the hall, go out the pre-K door to that larger piece of equipment. I also walked from my first, second, and third grades, and we walked this way and walked out to the piece of equipment that's already installed. I mean, it, it is doable, for sure. But, but my pre-K is suffering at this moment, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I know you're really excited about having some new equipment and new additions and everything out there.
Yes.
And I know you're willing to work around anything, but you were, you were involved in, in part of the original plan on, on this project also, weren't you?
Yes.
You were included in that, and you were told, you know, you helped with the architects, told them which end of the building was, was switched, and it was determined.
I've been in contact with Kyle a lot, and we've emailed back and forth. He probably was tired of me telling him ideas. So, yes, I have been in contact with them.
So ideally, you would want it the way the original plan was, which is to have the taller tower at the end of the school with the older children, the grades three through five, and then the smaller tower. Because that's what our, and I know I'm kind of putting you on the spot, but that's what the original plan was. I know you're willing to work with whatever.
I am.
But the original plan was what was best, because that's what we decided originally.
So I'm always a person that tries to look at the bright side of things. And the good news is, if we leave them, we do have three play areas, which we would only have two otherwise. So, I am perfectly fine with whatever this board decides to do, honestly.
And with the original two, if we, if we just do go with option one, which is just moving the towers, that is age-appropriate, ages two through twelve on that end of campus, correct?
Yes, that's what.
Okay, this is something that I guess I do not understand. While the playground equipment was installed on the opposite sides of the campus than intended, the practical piece of it is the effect on students is fairly minimal. It means that we're going to have to do something to where we may change how they get to the playgrounds. So, both playgrounds are accessible, and the students can simply use the equipment that is best for their age group, with the exception, and I agree with you, with the pre-K. And I, I, I know that that is a necessary component and the fact that you have four of those classes. So, I guess what I'm looking at is, we have a duty, first of all, to be effective and serve our students at Parkview and system-wide. But we also have to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. So if it is a minimal situation that we can adjust, which that's what I'm hearing you say, is that it is doable. It can be handled at the school level. Is that correct?
Are the playgrounds the same except for the two big pieces? Are, are the swings...
Swings don't have to be moved.
The swing beams are exactly the same on both sides.
Everything's the same except for the two big pieces?
Yes.
Basic.
Madam Chair, if I may, you said it was minimal to the, to the students. It's, again, those averages from that bathroom are six hundred and thirty feet to, to switch from one side of the school to the other for the students. Where currently, it's two hundred and thirty-five feet from the same distance to where that they're, to where the new playground should be at.
But, Mr. Taylor, I think that Ms. Granon just said that she had walked this. And she feels like it, they can adjust.
Well, I guess that's what I'm getting at, is I know that they can. I just don't know that that's the best option. I'm thinking, for an adult, it was three minutes and forty seconds for me to travel by myself from one end of campus to the other. And I'm thinking of a kindergarten student, first grade, truthfully, any elementary student traveling that far by themselves, if they leave a jacket, if they're checked out. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things at play. Could it be done in necessarily? I mean, yeah, we could do anything, but we're doing this project, we're at the very beginning of it. And I feel like to be responsible with our taxpayer dollars, we need to make the best decision, not just for the immediate, but for longevity. This play equipment, it seems kind of silly, because we're talking about play equipment, but it's gonna be there for the next twenty-five to thirty years. These teachers will have to travel this every day. This isn't a temporary assignment, this will be where they are permanently.
I, I just have a few questions. So, I guess in my mind, I'm trying to rectify, there, there's no question there was an issue in that, that they were put on the opposite sides. I guess my, my confusion is, we've got to come up with a solution. And when I'm looking at option two, and then hearing what Ms. Granon said, it is almost like, unless I'm wrong, option two is, is a, is a win for Parkview because they get a, essentially a second pre-K for the classrooms, which would essentially give them four classrooms, or four playgrounds? Well, you're, you have the two, and then if you add that pre-K, that, this option two, that gives you three, and then you've got one in the front. So that would be, I mean, some schools have one playground. And I know from my schools, all of my schools, the distance of my schools are much farther to the playground than what Parkview is, because when we were over there, they're, they're essentially right across from each other. It's not like one is on the back side of the school and one is on the front. They're, they're right directly in front of each other. So, I, I mean, it's, I guess, I'm trying to just rectify in my mind why we would spend thirty-five thousand dollars and for what, and I know that you two are measuring differences in where you come from, but if you go right out the back door, if it's four hundred feet to walk all the way across, and essentially you were gonna have to walk a hundred and twenty-five feet, that's a difference of two hundred and seventy-five feet. That, in my mind, I just can't wrap my mind around spending thirty-five thousand.
That time did not count on PE, but is that right?
If it was done correctly, we wouldn't have had to spend it.
Yeah, I, I understand that, and I don't think anybody's disputing that. But that's where we're trying to correct the problem, but you're getting something for twenty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, but then you also have a fence that, that, that's inside the fence that's gonna look, I just don't think that's gonna be...
Madam Chair. I thought, yes. Uh, we have multiple playgrounds that have that, where they have a fence that goes between them. The biggest one being a...
The, the only last thing I wanted to say is, is that, you know, and we're basing this off of what the current thing is now. We're, we're essentially building four classrooms on each side. And at, when we built on to Valley View, we essentially said this was gonna be for, this, you know, this grade of classrooms. Well, now, it's not even used for the, that grade of classrooms. So the dynamics changed based off of what the, the school needed and how the population grew. So, who's to say that this isn't gonna happen once we build these? And then the dynamics may change, and so it'll be irrelevant.
This new, this addition at Parkview, what makes Parkview unique is the primary end, the, the K through two has bathrooms in the classroom, which are required. And the new addition will also have bathrooms in the classrooms on the primary end, but not on the three through five. So, switching that would not be possible. They'll always be primary on one end of the building and three through five on the other.
Could you shift and put, say, CDC on one end? Because it has class, I mean, I'm just trying to, like, make it make sense to me, and, you know.
Mr. Bryson.
I, option one, it's gonna cost thirty-five thousand dollars, but she will not get a pre-K. If we didn't put a pre-K there, it'd be fifty-seven thousand dollars, is that right?
That's correct.
So she will not get, and option two...
Okay, the cost to switch the two playgrounds, which is option one, would be fifty thousand minus the engineer's contribution for a total of thirty-five thousand.
But that don't count the pre-K.
That doesn't count the pre-K. The second option is leave, leave it as it is and invest in an additional and third playground for pre-K for a total after the engineer's contribution of seven thousand dollars. And the third option is to switch the slides and add the pre-K equipment for seventy-two thousand minus the engineer's contribution for a total of fifty-seven thousand. So those are the options, and do I have a motion?
No, 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 I won't. I'm like, I, I got something I want to say.
Okay, Mr. Bryson, go right ahead.
And I wrote down, and if it messes up, because some of the questions have been answered. But I wrote down, you say, if you read this, good luck. I, I do not know if my vote will make a difference. But I've got some questions before we make a full decision. Colin Corbett, we ask you this, is the playground where we wanted it? No, it's not, it, originally.
The playground is not in the location of the initial...
And if the bottom line is, it's those two pieces. What are the playgrounds weighed? If you take those two pieces off, are the playgrounds basically identical?
Yes.
Okay. Can, students can use either play, could, could, could the pre-K, the kindergarten kids go to that other, if they chose, if they was timing, they chose?
K through five, or five years old to twelve years old can play on either playgrounds for their age.
Okay. Question from one island president. I'm, I'm just asking, is there a requirement or a need other than we want two playgrounds, to have two playgrounds? Is that just a...
Are you saying it's there a necessity?
Yeah, is there a reason for that? Because some schools do not have, or are all the other schools gonna start asking for another playground?
All, all the other schools have two playgrounds.
Are they gonna start asking?
Of course they are.
Okay.
I, I would venture to say that all of our new projects probably do.
Yeah, I believe they do too. If we switch playgrounds, what are the issues? How far they have to walk? And what other elementary schools, do any other schools, we ask that for, do they have to walk? Like, I know, I say oh, because that's where I was, it could be any playground.
So Charleston walks between eight hundred to a thousand feet.
They walk really that, those classes, and it used to be now fourth and fifth, I don't know. And the library is over there by the football field.
I'm reclaiming my time.
And they have to walk all the way to the north end of the school, so that is a hike.
I bet they would change it if they could.
The president says it will work. Didn't say she wants it to work, but she said she, it will work. She wants a pre-K. The director of school and her staff says it will work. After school, and I've come over with my eighteen-month-old kid, can they get on either playground they wanted to? If they cho, if I cho, if I'm the parent after school?
If you're the parent...
You're not, they're not being stopped, can they, can, can you get in the playground after school?
They are fenced off, but we traditionally left our playgrounds open to the public as far as they visit.
Well, I'm not expert on playgrounds, but I did just meet a president, and we have playgrounds. And I'm gonna tell you, scheduling is a nightmare, because somebody's gonna get pla, PE at the time they don't want it. It's gonna mess up right middle reading time, but somebody's going to.
Mr. Bryson, this is not all your questions.
No, no, it ain't.
Okay.
No, it's just, I'm talking.
I don't want to take any of your time.
I, is, the bottom line comes to, we need, you could argue we need to move them. But is it worth, you said thirty-five, but count adding the pre-K fifty-seven thousand dollars to move them? Or would it be better to move the kid, tell the kids, you go down here, you go down there? That, that's not a question, that's probably a statement.
But now, we're not leaving pre-K out. We, we don't have to add it, they can use what we already have. We have a playground system out there.
Oh, I agree with you, I'm certain.
I'm just making sure.
Mr. Bryson, could I ask one question?
Yeah.
You're taking his time.
I know.
You're taking my time.
But I'm, I'm...
You're my friend though.
Thank you, you're my friend too. Okay. The one big tall tower that we're questioning, how, how much did it cost?
Two playground systems were purchased, and the two systems that were purchased together, and I need to double-check this one, Ellen, but I think the two of them were two hundred and thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand dollars.
Okay. But just that one tower?
They're not priced as just one tower, they're priced as the third system.
Okay.
And the two were approximately the same in cost, they did not vary the cost much.
Well, if you take the big one away and leave the one that's there, any kid in Bradley County would be glad to have that small. It's not small, it's smaller, but it's a pretty good size, it, it could go either way. I respect my fellow board members, I also respect the director of schools. Board member says, we have the money, we ought to use it. It's in the project for, uh, Parkview. Director says, just because we have it, why do we have to spend it? Are, are things that come up? There have been issues at Bradley and places, but I believe one of y'all, I asked one time, said it was like drainage or something, it had to be done, is that correct? Shouldn't waste that money, we could use it for other prob, maybe another pre-K kindergarten. I'm about finished. I can't read my rights.
So, Mr. Bryson, are you saying that the money, the contingency is for unforeseen types of situations?
Yeah, it could be for, one could ask, what should we do?
I haven't even started the project.
That's what we're asking.
That's exactly, but, now here's what's...
For the last, almost fifty minutes.
No, but it's important, it's important. I'm a sports person. I had a coach one time, I believe his name was Al McGuire, whose kid came to play ball for him. And they asked him, is your kid gonna play? And what his answer was, if he's better than your kid, he's gonna play. I said, well, if my kid's better, he's gonna play. But the only difference was, Al McGuire said, I break all ties. Meaning, if it's even, my kid's gonna play. And they would tend to believe you believe, you vote however you, people can vote however they want to, and they can still be friends, and they can be enemies, whatever. But director of schools, I don't necessarily agree with, with all of, I don't like the thing, but I think it's pretty close to a tie, and, and, uh, I think the director would have to have somebody like.
Okay, any other, Ms. Kasen?
The large tower is not concreted down or anything yet, right?
Correct.
The large tower has concrete under the lower section with the concrete company, and that was done because of the rain that was coming in this weekend. But that concrete that was put in is below the structural beams that tied together, so it's much easier to demo if they so chose to, that would protect their, their footers and their base from the rain this weekend. Maintain the flexibility for your decision.
Yeah, okay. I just, I personally wish I had an itemized list of how much each of those pieces of equipment cost. That's just me, because if you, well, that's just me. I, I just would be, would like to know how much that tower costs to just buy a new tower and put it down there.
There you go.
I know, I just stood on the horse, I'm sorry.
Any other questions? I think I have asked if there is a motion.
I, I just have one, Dr. Kas, you were involved with the architect, and you originally wanted these playgrounds on the respective ends, not where they're located at now.
I, I actually, those were conversations with, with Ms. Granon and those, and we've all established... And we've all established that they were switched. That they were switched. But now we have a situation where we just need to decide, or the board needs to decide, you know, what is the best option for all the children? A couple of things I would point out. I personally feel it's very important for those four CDC, four classrooms of pre-K to have playground equipment that they can run and play on. And I did watch it and they do play on the lower grounds. I also firmly believe that, you know, being an elementary school principal for a long time, you adjust and move as you can. If I were in elementary, I told them today, if I were an elementary school principal, I would want the extra playground. That's just where I came from, because you don't, I mean, we're looking for a lot of kids to be coming to that school. So, again, but there was, there was an incidental switch from looking at the plans and we all recognize and do that. But here today, the board just needs to give direction so that we can move on with the construction.
But we did make, there's provisions for pre-K now. I don't want anybody to be confused on this, because they can play on the playgrounds that are there installed currently. We don't have to add any more equipment.
Well, Mr. Taylor, what I would tell you, especially for a lot of these CDC students, even those, the height of those grounds, even though they're rated that 512, is really difficult for them to jump on. That's why I sit out there and watch to see, would they go to the higher one or the lower one? They chose the lower one. But I would hope that, no matter what the boards decide, that we do, you know, support the, support whatever comes out of the meeting, that we all support that and we move forward with whatever decisions.
But we had, we had those CDC and pre-K classes before we come up with these designs.
Yes, and the thing that Ms. Grandin had pointed out that she was concerned about is there wasn't equipment being purchased to address what they, what the needs that they had.
Are the pre-K classes, are they special needs pre-K or regular, or both? So they are some of more special needs.
Three.
I've got two CDC, one inclusion, and one family resource.
One family resource, one inclusion, and two CDC?
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'll ask this for, have you asked them if they would come up with any money?
Who is them? Family Resource Agency has always been good to help me with anything. I have not asked them that, yet. And then I also have building funds, if I need to help with this situation, I can.
Madam Chair.
Okay, yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the board approve option one for disassemble and relocate the two tower play structures.
Okay, I have a motion to disassemble and relocate the two play structures. That is option one. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have an option and a second. Any further discussion or questions?
That's this one right here.
Option one, yes. The option would disassemble and relocate the two play structures. The vendor has reduced where possible for a total of $35,000.
Why does it take longer to do that?
You can ask questions all right.
All right, Liz, would you please call the roll?
Helen Smith?
No.
Amanda Lee?
No.
Rachel Goums?
Yes.
Josh Taylor?
Yes.
Ted Bryson?
No.
Vicky Beatty?
No.
Nancy Kason?
No.
Five no's, two yeses, motion doesn't pass.
Okay, so we do have a motion that the board has rejected. But we need, there are two additional motions that are available, or two additional options, options two and options three. And as a matter of fact, I think there probably is another option, which is to leave it as it is with no pre-K equipment. So do I have a motion?
Just to clarify.
A recommendation for one of the options, yes.
Madam Chair, we do have pre-K equipment, right? The ages two through 12.
You do, those are actually coming out, those will be...
No.
We have pre-K, new pre-K equipment installed on the fourth, fifth grade side.
In the wrong place, but it's there now.
It is there.
It's on the other side.
The shorter tower is rated for ages two through 12, but it's on the third, fourth, and fifth grade side.
That's that piece.
So the option two would put pre-K equipment on both sides?
Correct.
So that pre-K could access it from either side?
Correct.
Okay, do I have a motion for option two or three?
I make a motion for option three.
Okay, I have a motion for option three, which is to change the two structures and add the pre-K equipment for a total of $57,000. That is $72,000 minus the $15,000. So I have a motion for option three. Do I have a second? Okay, hearing no second, that motion fails. We have one option left, or to leave it as it is, and no pre-K equipment. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion, we adopt option two.
Okay, I have a motion for option two. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have an option two, which is you would be leaving the structures where they are, but you're going to be adding the pre-K equipment for a total of $7,000, and that is minus the 15 from the engineer. So we have a motion and a second for option two. Any questions, discussion? Liz, would you call the roll?
Nancy Kason?
Yes.
Helen Smith?
Yes.
Amanda Lee?
Yes.
Rachel Goums?
Well, since it's the only option, I guess that's a yes.
Vicky Beatty?
Yes.
Josh Taylor?
No.
Ted Bryson?
Yes.
Six yeses, one no, no shorts.
Okay, we are going with option two for Parkview Elementary. With nothing else on the agenda, this motion, this meeting is adjourned.